Good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the County Commissioner in Okaloosa County. I'd like to begin the meeting today on August 19th with an invocation by Senior Pastor Reverend Felix Cole, and then the Pledge of Allegiance by the Choctaw Hachy High School Junior ROTC. Would you please stand with us?
Good morning, everyone. So Commissioners, good to see you all again. I invite all of you to pray with me, Dawn, today. Righteous and loving God, we come before you today asking for your wisdom and for your guidance. Lord, we're reminded of your words in Micah 6:8 that you require us to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. Lord, I ask that you bless all of our commissioners today, all of our concerned and citizens that are here today for the matters that are before them, that you will give them wisdom, understanding, patience, guidance, love, and understanding for all the things that they will encounter. Be with their families, be with their decisions, be with them as they go to and fro to do the things that you've called for each and every one of them to do. Let us come together today, God, in a sense of unity for purpose, so that no self-interest is ever coming forward, but only your love, your mercy, and your grace. Be with us now, God, even as we may disagree. We won't have to be disagreeable, and in all things, we will give you glory, and we will take no credit. In your son's Jesus's name, I ask this prayer. Amen. All, please join me in the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to deviate from the written agenda just a touch, and we're going to take on Consent Agenda Item 3. But what I would like to offer is, is there anyone from the audience that has a desire to speak publicly regarding only Agenda Item 3, which is a request approval of and authorize the chairman to execute a proclamation declaring July 20th, 2025, as Virginia Mills' Day in Okaloosa County to commemorate her 100th birthday? Is there anyone that desires to speak to that issue only? Seeing none, I believe we can take that publicly.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval to declare this Virginia Mills' Day in Okaloosa County.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. That passes unanimously since we have our special guest with us.
So I'd like to read this proclamation first. I'd like to recognize her daughter, Karen Baker, who was a county commissioner for a time, and it's so good to have you with us again. And it's my honor, and many of us appear to know Ms. Virginia Mills, because she's so active in politics still and so active in the community. So it's my honor to read this proclamation to designate July 20th, 2025, as Virginia Mills' Day. Whereas Virginia Marie Gustafson, known as Ginny, was born on July 20th, 1925, in Kansas City, Missouri, to Ernest Eugene Gustafson and Edna Marie Williams. And whereas Ginny, like many young women in the early 1940s, was dedicated to the war effort and took a job at Pratt Whitney Aircraft Corporation in Kansas City, Missouri, where she worked until a handsome Army Air Corps pilot, Rodney Charles Mills, swept her off her feet. They were wed on September 18th, 1943, and were eventually blessed with three sons and one daughter. Whereas while Rodney served his county in the Army, his country, excuse me, in the Army Air Corps, Ginny served as a gray lady in the hospitals across the nation, including Great Falls, Montana, Panama City, Florida, Falmouth, Massachusetts, Grandview, Missouri, Biloxi, Mississippi, and St. John, Newfoundland. And whereas Ginny maintained a strong and healthy home, dedicated herself to raising strong and resilient children, and set an example of community involvement by taking leadership roles in Cub Scouts, Catholic Ladies Society, PTA President, and Officers Wives Club. And whereas Rodney's retirement brought the family to Fort Walton Beach in 1967, where Ginny once again became involved in community activities such as Salvation Army, the Okaloosa County Home Extension, Garner's Beach Garden Club, the Fort Walton Beach Women's Club, the Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce, the Republican Club, Women's Republican Club, Fort Walton Beach Medical Center, and dedicated almost 30 years to leading her voting precinct and 19 years volunteering at the Okaloosa Tourist Development Council. Now therefore be it resolved by the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners that we do hereby proclaim and recognize July 20th, 2025, as Virginia Mills' Day, and this has been passed today, August 19, 2025. So what I'd like to do is have some photographs, but would she like to say anything before we... She can come to this podium and say something? No, you don't want to? Okay. So I know there's some friends with her, so whomever you want in the pictures, just bring them up front, and we'll come around and present this, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Hofstadter.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's always with great pleasure that I get to come forward a few times each year to recognize county. The county's most valuable asset, that's our employees, is the commission knows we do so during certain milestones in their career. We have a number of service awards this morning. If I call your name, you'll please come forward and stand with me, and in the end, we'll get a group picture. We have a few two-year service awards. I'd like to start with James Sutton. James is with Parks and Facility Maintenance, and he's a Parks Construction Technician. This is his two-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Melissa Thompson. Melissa is an Airport Financial Service Specialist, and she's with the Airports Department. One more two-year service award, and this is Ricardo Thornton. Ricardo's an HVAC Technician with Parks and Facility Maintenance. Next, we're going to move on to a 10-year service award, and I'd like to ask Terry Henderson to come forward. Terry is a case manager, and she's with the Court Services Department. And lastly, we have one 20-year service award. I'd like to ask April McDaniel to come forward. April is the Major of Jail Operations with the Corrections Department.
Mr. Hofstadter, County Administrator's update.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have just a few announcements this morning. I just want to remind the board, as we move into next month, September's typically pretty busy for us as where you've got a number of budget workshops coupled with our BCC meetings. I just want to remind the board, our first BCC meeting on September 2nd, that will follow holidays. That meeting will start at 1:30 in Cresheu. We would typically like to schedule the first public hearing right after that because of the published the published list of all the public hearings that had to take place. We had to move that public hearing to the fourth, that Thursday, at 5:01 also in Cresheu. That will be followed on September 16th. We were able to put both of those meetings together, so we'll start the BCC meeting at 3 o'clock that afternoon here in Shalimar, and that will be followed at 5:01 by the final public hearing. So that is our month of September meetings. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we pull Item 21 from the consent agenda. That item was published a little too quick. We need a little more work done on that, and we'll bring it back at a future meeting. And with that, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Hoshara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates this morning.
Mr. Allen for the Clerk's Office.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. No update from the Clerk's Office. Thank you.
This time, we'll have public comment. I do have some speaker cards. If you have not completed a speaker card, we will have a second option for public comment at the end of the meeting. If you'll see the Mr. Tomachak in the corner, you'll have three minutes to talk about any item that you desire. We'll begin with Kenneth Fuller.
My name is Kenneth Fuller, and I want to talk to Robert Armin Gutwin, the lawyer right there, and Hoshara right there. Robert Armin, you gave $1,000 to the clerk guy, which I just want to put that on the record. The county attorney who worked for the company in Tallahassee, Giblins, or whatever his name. Your bar number is 41194. You were born September 5th, 1979, graduated from Miami Beach High School, and from there. And Trey, you were born September 28th, 1979. And also, I want to bring up the part about Paul Mixon. This guy named Nolan Weeks, he put you down as a reference sheet on reference, and a guy named Graham Fountain, who used to be a commissioner. He was charged with the FDLE, said he violated the human policy company financial service thing he violated. I'm not good at that, but you know what I'm talking about. Hoshara, you are with a nonprofit organization of county attorney, county, whatever y'all are over these commissioners, and you also, y'all, the guy named Nolan Meeks, you gave him 21-day pay insurance that leave paid, and it cost the county $10,000. And if he won't sue the county, you know, because company mentioned financial made a complaint with the Human Resources, and it didn't get to the state attorney. But the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I got a case against you, and y'all are using your position, which is what you accuse Nolan Weeks of doing, and because you don't work for the county, you contract with the county, but they can be held accountable, the same as Nathaniel Dotson Boyle. His name, it used to be Nathaniel Dotson. I went to school with his daddy. But anyway, where the sanitation guy, he got the guy the job. Then when he became Senator, he made the guy the head guy, and he bragging about it, saying, "Look what I can do." You know, and the tricks you're using, lawyer tricks, and plus, you got Carrie Ann Parsons, 39 years old. She was born November 29th, 1985, as your co-counselor that the county hired, also with you, and you are, and that's your thing, and you're barred, you can be barred from that, from using your position, using your lawyer strategy, illegal strategy. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Rich Sluman? I'm sorry if I butchered that. Schudman, I sure did. Thank you.
At this point here, my name is Richard Schudman. I am a Foundation Trustee for Animal Advocates of Northwest Florida. Some of you Commissioners have spoken with our group, and mainly what I want to say today is I was waiting to see what the... I was just informed about this meeting late last night. But my main thing that I want to speak of is the fact is that I know there's a topic about PAWS that's coming up. I reviewed what as quickly as I could about that, and I just want to let you know that Animal Advocates will be standing ready to watch, to assist either PAWS, other shelters, as well as the county for animal services. I prefer the contract be changed that rather than animal control. But Animal Advocates will be a large contender in the near future to help this county with animal services. We have a lot of goals and projects in the works right now. We could talk about that another time, but I think I have a fellow person here who's got more to speak to than myself, but just wanted to know that we are very, as Animal Advocates, we are very passionate about animals. And so as far as helping out, our mission statement, our purpose clause is to support shelters and rescues and provide low-cost spanier opportunities for the county, and we're actively working on that right now.
Great. Thank you, sir. Jeremy McBey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jeremy McBey from Laurel Hill, Florida, and I'm here today to, on behalf of the taxpayers and the community of... in the community up there, to figure out if you can help us with something with Almerant Fire Department. They have their own admission decided that the property appraiser is not doing their adequate job of telling them how many homes are on a piece of property. So they have just decided at random to go and look at the maps, the GIS and count rooftops, and assess property owners, some more than others. There are some properties that they didn't count the rooftops on, some they did. And when the trim notice goes out, it says this is not a bill, so most people just discard it. And I would have not known had somebody not pointed it out to me. However, everybody that I've talked to, no matter their stature or livelihood, some are business people, some are just making it, some are old gentleman on the lawnmower. They have no idea that their assessments for fire protection up there have now transferred over to the rooftop, to their barn, to portable carports. And the assessment's misleading because my assessment says I have one unit, which is correct, at $123.76. But the assessment is doubled because they're now charging me for a barn, an ag structure. Other neighbors in the community, some have five units, rightfully so. Now they're assessed for nine. And I mean, that's over $1,000 for fire protection for one property with nine barns on it, if you will. The problem with this is they say, well, you know, call us, we'll fix it, and let us come on your property. Well, you should not be able to assess somebody a tax and turn around and use that to extort them to give up your Fourth Amendment right to unreasonable searches and seizures, and them have to come on your property. Now, full disclosure, I called. They fixed mine. What about the people that have a mortgage, that they don't pay their taxes, their mortgage broker pays their taxes through their escrow account? They never know. They just get swept through, and all this money is being collected. They had surpluses at the fire department over the last couple of years of some $20,000, $30,000. If this goes through unanswered, then their budget will probably be next year somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 if this goes through. We need your help. Thank you for allowing us.
Jeremy, your dad called me.
Yes, sir.
And he told me his was a 400% increase.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. His main bill normally is one unit, and they billed him for every shed on the property. It's, and we also have other neighbors up there that, you know, have hundreds of acres and more than one residential unit, plenty of rooftops. They got billed for one. You cannot assess something unevenly across a community. It has to be done, and the same for everybody. And this is just, it's theft, it's a phishing scam, it's catch me if you can, you know. How many of you have heard of Almerant Fire Department?
Sure.
Okay. How many of you have ever visited their website? How many of you knew they had a website? Okay. Are we in a sunshine law violation here? Because if that's the only place their advertising is on their website, 98% of everybody don't even know they got one. And in my line of work, I'm in real estate, by the way, most of my customers I have to go to and physically sit down and let them wet sign contracts because they do not use a computer. Most of them are elderly, they don't have it. There's got to be something can be done here. I don't know if the answer is the county taking this over and disbanding that particular department that's been fraught with scandal for years.
Well, the suggestion I gave you was to, of course, reach out to your state representative.
Yes, yes, and I have done that. I have reached out to Representative Maney.
Yes, sir.
At state level because something's got to be done.
Yes, sir.
This is just theft.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Scott Stone.
My name is Scott Stone. I reside in Shalimar, and as a retiree, I volunteer at many local animal rescue organizations. My wife, Deborah, and I have hosted at our own home several fundraisers to benefit Panhandle Animal Welfare Association. Over time, I finally realized that the only real answer to meeting the challenges related to animal control and animal welfare is the creation and permanent operation of a low-cost spay-neuter clinic in Okaloosa County. For years, the county's expenditure for animal control and welfare has grown dramatically, yet the county has done nothing to prevent that growth. A low-cost neuter, spay and neuter clinic will do just that. It will give all citizens the availability of low-cost subsidized spaying and neutering of their pets. Recent inflation has caused the average cost of such an operation to skyrocket. In fact, the cost is so great that it's become unaffordable for the majority of households. Over the years, the county has had the benefit of many great animal rescue organizations which have developed relationships with generous, caring veterinarians. But a gradual change is occurring in the veterinary community. Some practices are being bought by large corporations who are willing to perform little or no discounted operations. Many citizens and rescue groups are now forced to leave the county and to find an affordable alternative. They transport the animals to neighboring counties and go as even as far as Dothan, Alabama, where a low-cost clinic exists. This is a major problem for these organizations, which have no money to spare. Having a clinic in Okaloosa County will save them valuable time and money. The most important reason for creating a low-cost clinic is that it's the right thing to do. It's a quality of life issue that is high on the list for, for the very best people looking to make Okaloosa County their home. Now, I've laid out the problem. I think it's clear. And now I want to give you some good news. The county has a wonderful new foundation, Rich just spoke about it, Animal Advocates of Northwest Florida, who will be building a low-cost clinic right here in Shalimar. Land has been purchased, a vet has been found, and the next steps are on the horizon. And as you move ahead, and I know y'all are looking ahead to make some changes with respect to animal welfare and control and animal services, please be aware of the, of this new clinic. And I think the county should take advantage of it and understand that it's a great opportunity. And please support animal advocates in every way that you can, both financially and otherwise. It is greatly deserved. With your help, the citizens, and I might add, the animals of Okaloosa County will be the winners. And I'll just conclude by saying an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That's an old adage, but it rings very true in this arena. And please, as Rich said earlier, call on me and Rich, if you need assistance as you move ahead beyond the upcoming year. I know at the end of this meeting, y'all are looking to devote on a million dollars to be spent toward animal welfare and control over the next year. That number will only grow if we don't have a low-cost spay-neuter clinic in our county. Our county should have it. You know, we're in a fluent county. We should be ahead of Dothan, Alabama, and Spay Bay and Bay County. So in summary, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thanks.
Chairman, may I?
All right.
Mr. Stone, before you sit down, thank you for all that you do and the advocacy that you do. And I look forward to working with you and this other gentleman and your new advocacy group as we move forward. If we're going to get in this business, I want to do it right. And we'll see where this goes later this meeting.
We know a lot of, we know.
You know a lot more than I do about this area.
All the residents of all the rescues need to be involved because they know the real world, what needs to be done.
I have great respect for you, and I know that you understand a lot more about this.
The time they give to the channels is immeasurable. I mean, the time spent by stocks and animal protection.
It's unbelievable.
And all the other groups just is immeasurable. And the low-cost spay-neuter clinic will get the matter under control.
And I agree with you because we've had so many calls about cat colonies and do something, and let's see, we haven't had the responsibility until now. So thank you. Thank you.
Nicole Chase.
Hello, good morning. My name is Nicole Chase, and I live in northeast Florida. Today, I like to talk about options. Why do we clamor over why there's only two options or two parties to vote for when a large amount of the population see a third option as the more ideal one? That subset of the population knows that said option will be better in the long run, despite what we hear from those who don't fall into that category. If we cannot see the third option for one reason or another, that's okay. We're humans. We don't know what we don't know after all. What is, however imperative, is being open and receptive to hearing about other options. Within the National Historic Preservation Act, there's verbiage about considering options. The SS United States, which has been on the National Register of Historic Places since 1999, is underneath the NHPA. The complete and full impacts of intentionally sinking the ship as an artificial reef, other than the forecasted economic impacts, in my opinion, have not been addressed or acknowledged in the way that they should have been, much like the third option, neither scraping the ship nor being sank as an artificial reef. The impacts at a high level include the exposure to environmental toxins to both humans and to the marine life in the environment that is within the three Lars sites, Alpha, Bravo, and Charlie. Per two independent EPA-certified laboratories, we, the SS United States Preservation Foundation, of which I am the research and development officer of, have attained results that helps to paint, no pun intended, a picture of such environmental impacts. For instance, per the results, the concentration of hexavalent chromium, a carcinogenic component of zinc chromate, which is the yellow primer paint found throughout the ship, is five orders of magnitude higher than the EPA's reference value of hexavalent chromium, and six orders of magnitude higher than the World Health Organization's reference value. Should the ship be sank as an artificial reef, there's a likelihood of humans, divers being trapped, suffering decompression sickness, and of course, dying as a result of that as well. If sank as an artificial reef, the fish who might be living on or around the ship will be exposed to such toxins like PCBs, lead, and the previously aforementioned zinc chromate. Because of the bioaccumulation properties of the aforementioned toxins, fish might not be able to be consumed. This has already happened with the USS Ariskene due to the PCBs that are still leaching. This is as of 2017, and likely sooner, and likely more recent than that as well. Sometimes the third option, while yes, is avant-garde, and some might consider to be risky, in my humble opinion, is the safest option to both human life and to marine life. To borrow what JFK said, and his "We choose to go to the moon" speech at Rice University, the third option should be considered, not because it is an easy option, but because it is a hard option. We are a nation that put people on the moon. There's nothing that we cannot do if we put our collective minds to it. Thank you for your time.
Our first visitor today is the mayor of Paxton, Florida, Mayor Ann Sexton. So close. Our second visitor of the day is Ms. Sarah Susky with Advocacy Partners.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It's wonderful to see you. Thanks for making time for me today. I really appreciate it. And want to start out by thanking each and every one of you for the opportunity to represent this amazing county over in Tallahassee. You know, obviously, there are 67 counties, but I think Okaloosa is the most special. You guys do such a wonderful job with being good stewards of the resources that you're given, being fiscally conservative, and taking care of the citizens that you are elected to represent. Thank you also so much for the amazing staff that you guys have put together. It has been such a joy to work with each and every one of them. They are available at a moment's notice when I have a panic attack and need an answer to a question, and they are very diligent in the work that they do. So thank you for letting them be a resource to us as well. So the 2025 legislative session, it ended a couple of months ago. It seems like it was going to go on forever and ever. Typically, session is about 60 days or exactly 60 days. This year, it was 105 days. And the legislature needed to take a little bit of extra time to work on our state's budget. You know, the days of the federal money from COVID are over, and I think our leaders wanted to be conservative and, you know, put away lots of extra money in case we have another emergency in the state, et cetera. But they did draw to a conclusion, and the budget, the tax package, and all the conforming and implementing bills were passed, and then the governor signed all of those with about 13 hours left in the fiscal year this year on June 30th, and were able to allow the state to go forward with the 2025-26 budget year that we are in right now. So that budget was about $115 billion. The legislature made investments in the environment, tackling sea level rise and making investments in the Everglades. They put funds toward emergency preparedness, as I mentioned earlier. In the tax package, they created permanent sales tax holidays this year, and eliminated forever the business rent tax, which has been a huge, you know, Florida's kind of been an outlier with that tax. And so getting out of the way of our local businesses, so that's a very good thing. And then in terms of projects for Okaloosa County, the governor approved a million dollars for the Santa Rosa Boulevard Improvement Project, $250,000 for the Gap Creek Channel Study, 1.46 million for the Coastal Stormwater retrofit program, continued to fund your mental health and substance abuse pre-trial program, which has been very successful in the county, and then the connecting the collectors project for $4 million. That was very important to our Senator Gates. So we were very fortunate. The governor vetoed about $600 million in mainly local projects, like those of ours that were approved. So very fortunate, and many thanks to the governor and to your legislative delegation, who I will talk about a little bit later. So lots of legislation passed this year. It was another kind of strange year, slow to get going, but they were able to move forward and do a lot of really good things for our state, including addressing affordable housing, designating the Gulf of America that we sit adjacent to, a lot of work on the environment, and talking about emergency preparedness again in policy as well. And there were a couple of important bills to the county that did not pass this year. Raising the caps on sovereign immunity was not successful this year. Again, also term limits for county commissioners was not successful. And also the changes to tourist development taxes and creating an offset for property taxes as well. I anticipate that we're going to see some of those pieces of legislation popping back up again. We're going to be right in the 2026 session. Almost immediately, we've got about a little less than two months before committee hearings begin on October 6th, and this will be the final year for our presiding officers and Governor DeSantis as well. So Speaker Perez will be term limited out of the House. Senate President Albritton is not term limited, but this may be his final session. It will certainly be his final session as Senate President. And those gentlemen are going to look to complete their unfinished business from their time in office. And that is going to be focused a lot on things that are important and are going to affect this county. So property tax reform, the House has set up a select committee to address property tax reform. They're going to begin meeting next month and talk through a lot of different ideas. There are lots of them out there, and, you know, counties, local And, you know, counties, local governments will have an opportunity to weigh in on those conversations, but that's certainly gonna be something that is probably at the very top of the list of things that this legislature wants to get done. You know, there will be some sales tax reform, property insurance issues. I'm sure we're gonna have some big healthcare stuff going on as well. But it's still unclear exactly what the final priorities of these presiding officers will be. But we know that we are very well represented in Okaloosa County. We've got an incredible legislative delegation with Senate President, former Senate President Gates in the Senate now, future, hopefully, Senate President Trumbull as well. And then we've got Judge Maney, who is beloved by all of his colleagues and, you know, will continue to serve in a leadership position in the House. And then our newest representative, Representative Wales, who you guys may be familiar with a little bit. Excited for his time in the legislature and to see what he's gonna do. And so, you know, I feel really good that Okaloosa County is in good hands at the legislative level. This session will be a lead-in to the twenty twenty-six general election, which is gonna be a big one in Florida. We've got a lot of elections going on. So all of our state representatives will be up for election, half of our state senators, and then our governor's office will be open. Anticipate that we'll have a couple of people on each side of the aisle who will be running for the governor's office. So yet to be seen what will happen there. Our new Attorney General Uthmeyer will be actually running for election after he was appointed, as will our CFO, Engolia. And then Commissioner, Agriculture Commissioner Simpson will be up for reelection as well. So as we're looking at, I know you guys have begun the process of developing your legislative priorities for the coming year, looking at projects that we want to go after. It is important, and Okaloosa County has always been incredibly good about including a local match. Legislators like to see that we have some skin in the game. But it is gonna be a really tight year again this year. We do not anticipate that there will be any more, potentially less, money for local projects. So we want to focus on things that have a regional impact, that focus on water quality, infrastructure, et cetera. Those are the projects that you guys typically look at anyway. So excited to discuss those further. But to conclude, there's really never a dull moment in Florida. We always say, if you've seen one session in Tallahassee, you've seen one session. So this past year was certainly unique and anticipate that there will be a little bit of fireworks this coming session. But we know and have faith that our leaders are going to do what's best for our state as you guys do here in your local community. So thank you again on behalf of our entire firm for the opportunity to represent this beautiful community. We're very proud to be able to go to legislators from across the state to talk about Okaloosa County and the good work that you guys are doing here. And it's just an honor to play a very small role in the efforts that you guys are undertaking every single day to be responsible and good stewards for the resources that your citizens give you. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, or I can just hush and that's it.
Mistress, thank you for the work that you're doing. I think it should definitely be noted that it's not the first time, but again, everything that went to the governor's desk for Oakliss County that you carried for us was approved. We weren't vetoed on any of those items. And so, so thank you for the diligence and the relationships that you have and the way that you do prioritize the efforts that we prioritize for the county.
Susky, it's a pleasure to work with you all these years. You represent us so well. Advocacy Partners does a great job. It reflects the stellar leadership that we have in Okaloosa County. So thank you for all that you've done. And the chairman just said it very well. We've got all of our projects. I dread this next session for a number of reasons, but I'm glad you're at the helm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Smith and Chief Bage.
Called her Dr. Smith every time, and I got in trouble. And so this time I said Ms. Smith, but thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, sir.
You said?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commission, audience. I'm here to represent the post overdose support team. And as the previous speaker talked about Okaloosa County being a great place and doing things right, I can tell you I can't echo her statement more, and especially when it comes to the post overdose support team. I'm gonna do a little bit of background, and then I'm gonna turn it over. And I won't say doctor like you did. I will say, I'll turn it over to Beth to talk about the outcomes of our program. So how we got to the post overdose support team was back at the end of twenty twenty-three. We got the statistics for Okaloosa County for overdose deaths, and we saw we were one of the top seven counties in the state of Florida for overdose opioid deaths. Our medical examiner district, which is the four western counties, were number one for overdose deaths per capita. That means we had more per capita overdose deaths than Jacksonville, Tampa, Miami, places that you would associate with drug deaths and drug overdoses. We ranked greater than them per capita. We knew something had to be done. In late twenty-three, early twenty-four, at the O chip meetings that the Health Department coordinates, and we have stakeholders from across the county, from both county offices, nonprofits, and local jurisdictions. I believe Bridgeway talked about a program that Daytona was piloting, that they called the Drug Abuse Response Team, DART. I went down to Daytona, I evaluated the program and brought it back here. And I could tell you, we put an aggressive timeline. This was early twenty-four. And we said, within six months, we wanted to pilot a similar program here in Okaloosa County. I don't think anything has ever been done in government as quickly or as efficiently as we got the post overdose support team running. And a lot of it had to do with two key people. One, Sheila Fitzgerald, who's sitting right there, who was able to secure funding for us from Core and from the opioid settlement, and Emily Pickens, who's not here today, who kind of coordinated the efforts between the Health Department and the local providers. Another key component in this, and I'm glad he's here today, was Sheriff Eric Aiden. I went over to his office in the infancy of this, and he calls me the question guy. So I went over there, and he knew I'd have some questions for him, and it was kind of like Jerry Maguire. And I don't know who was which role in this movie, but I had my stats, and Eric had his stats on his desk. And he basically said, you had me at hello. He was all in to do stuff that was gonna save lives here in Okaloosa County. So the sheriff's office came on board in the infancy. We piloted the program in Fort Walton Beach. And I know if I alluded to the program, and I'll explain a little bit about the program right now, but I wanted to show the level of collaboration and what we did in Okaloosa County to actually save lives. Because we had saved, and one of the models we have for Post is, we may have saved your life with a reversal drug. Now we want to save your future. And that's what we were doing by Post, not just saving lives, but we were saving futures. Post goes out to every single administration of a opioid reversal drug. The biggest one is Narcan. Within twenty-four to seventy-two hours of Narcan being administered by law enforcement, EMS, or the fire department, regardless of where you are in Okaloosa County, because every single municipality in the county participates in this program, you'll have a knock on your door from a three-person team. It'll be a police officer, sheriff's deputy, community paramedic, and a clinician from Bridgeway. We will then offer you any drug treatment program which is available readily in Okaloosa County. We go with that twenty-four to seventy-two hour window, because that's kind of that golden window. Prior to twenty-four hours is a little bit too soon. After seventy-two hours, you fall back into the environmental factors that may have led you to your drug overdose in the first place. And when Beth tells you these stats, you will be amazed at the success that this program has had. So since I've introduced the program, I'd now like to turn it over to Beth to actually talk about the success of the program.
Do we have a slide?
We do.
Okay, to date, as Chief Bage said, this has been, it started being piloted a little over a year ago. And program to date, we've had, and I do want to clarify, the number of overdoses are the ones that we know about that go through the EMS system. So the number of overdoses that have occurred are a hundred and ninety. We've had two hundred and two post visits. Now, the reason for the, it's more than the hundred and ninety is that they go out and make second visits if needed. And we, out of those visits, we had a hundred and fourteen client contacts. Forty-three percent of the individuals Post made successful contact with have enrolled in some sort of treatment. And one of the unique things about the Post program is that when they go out there, they're giving them all the information about the different treatments out there that's available so that they have that choice, you know, as to what's best for them and their families. But so twenty-seven have enrolled in behavioral health programs, nine have enrolled or chosen faith-based programs. And thirteen, oh, we actually even initiated this in the jail, the medication-assisted treatment. So thirteen of the inmates have actually enrolled in treatment at the jail. So forty-nine total people have received help. And it's not just the clients. It's not just those that had the overdose that have been able to enroll in treatment. We've also reached family members that have enrolled into treatment. And, you know, it may not seem like a, I mean, we're not reaching thousands or anything, you know, but we are making a difference, and this team is making a difference. And I just want to throw my kudos in here that, first off, I want to thank the Board of County Commission for providing this opportunity of the Post program. And secondly, I want to thank our O chip groups, our members, our community agencies, our individuals, all of these people working together. They've collaborated and actually partnered together, which is rare sometimes, you know, bringing a lot of people together, but they've actually collaborated in creating and implementing the Post program. It is through their commitment and dedication that is, their commitment and dedication for ending overdoses that is truly saving lives. And I hope I've covered this. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Cox.
I have one. So we consider ourselves this family-oriented, clean, community-conservative, masonry, very Christian. I mean, I shouldn't say religious. I don't want to get in trouble. How come we have so many drug overdoses in this community? How can we have such a drug usage, a drug problem? Any insights into that?
We're not immune regardless of what our community is, and it impacts people of, you know, of all aspects in life. You know, so we're never immune to that. And I don't know.
But it's higher than other areas, according to what you all said.
It is per capita. It's higher than other areas. And the question you ask, Commissioner, is a question we ask every single meeting. We ask every single group we go out to. And we've gotten answers across the spectrum, what makes Okaloosa County unique. The only time we don't like being first is in drug overdose deaths. So that is a first-place distinction we'd love to lose, and we'd like somebody else to claim that from us. Some of the answers we've gotten, and this is just conjecture, is that Okaloosa County has had a history of drug usage, and it's not something that is new, but it's something that has been ingrained in the culture of Okaloosa County since the founding of Okaloosa County. And in times when Okaloosa County was different, with the gambling that went on and other stuff in Okaloosa County, there's always been an underculture of drug use. What has aggravated that is the introduction of fentanyl. So you had a prescription drug epidemic in the late nineties, early two thousands. The state and federal government did an outstanding job of stopping doctor shopping, pill mills, all that closed down. We did nothing for the addiction. We solved a symptom, but not the problem. So everybody then went to illicit drugs. They went to heroin. They went to street-level drugs. Fentanyl then was mixed in, the perfect storm, and then we saw that spike in overdose deaths. You have other things about being I-ten corridor, but there's other counties on I-ten that don't suffer the same amount as we do. Tourism has a little bit of a play into it, but we look at the numbers. Tourism does not account for the degree that we're above the other areas. It may be a co-founding variable in there, but tourism has a little bit to do with it. Education of the public, identifying that we have a problem, possibly being behind the curve in certain aspects, may have aggravated the situation. We've now turned that curve, and I could tell you, we're no longer in the top seven counties in the state of Florida. So when you look at the new map, we're no longer bright red. The only time Okaloosa County does not want to be bright red is on the drug overdose map. So we're no longer bright red for the drug overdoses. It's programs like Post. It's programs from nonprofits. Post has now involved a peer, so we're going to another thing. Post does a lot of community outreach. I think the messaging now that we may have been behind in Okaloosa County, because we've rode on the laurels before of being the community that you described and not identifying the drug culture that we may have had, is no longer here. We've now bent that needle, and for the first time, drug overdoses are trending down in Okaloosa County.
A follow-up question. The population, as you look at the bell curve, what's the age range of?
It's your working population. We are fortunate that it's not a lot of younger kids that are overdosing. We try to message and we work with the school board, but it is a lot of eighteen to about fifty-five. One of the demographics is service or labor industry skew a little bit higher. And that may be because they're using it for pain management, and they just be more readily available in that culture.
That's actually what I was thinking, perhaps, because we have a high rate of injury due to military backgrounds. I'm one, I was wondering about that, if it hadn't started with pain management and ended up being drug overdose.
And that is a possibility.
Commissioner Cox.
Just want to say, well, I want to start what I'm about to say with thank you for addressing this. To you, to Sheriff Faden, to all of you who work in law enforcement. I know that this is a tremendous thing to try to tackle. You only get the ones that you see, I mean, as in any situation. And there's so many more irons in the fire working against you than you can ever possibly address just yourselves. But thank you for the ones that you do, because that's, I mean, I've seen the videos, I've watched the videos. I make my children go to your presentations on this, not because they're in a target demographic necessarily, but because, you know, there are stories of law enforcement officers responding and dying from accidental fentanyl poisoning. That makes it wide open. It is no longer about whether or not we're a clean, fun place to work and play and visit. It is, fentanyl, the fentanyl crisis has affected every walk of life from every household. I went to one of these events where, you know, the guest speaker asked everyone at every table, everyone at ten top, to raise their hand if they had had any family member affected by the opioid crisis. And there wasn't a single table in the room that didn't have a hand raised in this county. It is not, I don't think it's necessarily, you know, a demographic thing so much. You know, we have some in schools. I'm sure parents are less likely to report, you know, something like that. Now that we have Narcan and it's, and we're able to administer it in the home and those kinds of things, I am thankful because that means my children's friends aren't even, you know, my children aren't gonna experience the loss of a friend, you know, who has been availed Narcan to rescue them or what have you when they, when they come across this. But beyond that, I mean, we come from an area that used to be called, I mean, for those of you who haven't lived here as long as I have, which is probably most of you have not lived here as long as I have. The newspaper here used to be called the Playground Area Daily News. You know, we advertised the fact that we were a fun place to come and play and unfortunately sometimes get in trouble. You know, so I think it's not a short demographic change that's happened here, but rather, you know, that most people come and play and lose their inhibitions when they're on vacation. Certainly, the service industry, I think, is gonna be a higher incidence of that, necessary for pain management. But because that's, you know, that's where people come and play and swap numbers and that kind of thing with people from a far different area than just our own. So we're gonna have all of the people from Tennessee, from Louisiana, from Chicago, from anywhere that come to vacation, we're gonna have all of those people, you know, influencing all of our people. And that's not gonna be something that it changes anytime soon without just the constant education, you know, constantly, you know, teaching or retraining our children to know that those dangers are out there. I'm doing it for mine. My kids are probably the nerdiest, you know, most secluded kids you can possibly imagine. Even my cheerleader, you know, is very, you know, walled off to those kinds of influences, but they're gonna be affected. Because if one of my children doesn't accidentally overdose, you know, picking up fentanyl off of something that was handed to them from a friend, then one of yours will be. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you for all of you that experience this every day and trying to make it a better county. Thank you for all of you that experience this every day and trying to make it a better county. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say thank you. Uh, the work that you guys do is just so extremely important. And, uh, you know, you mentioned it wasn't thousands of, of people that you're making contact with, but every single one of them counts and every single one of them has, you know, has an effect on their family, their communities as well. Um, and there's a, you know, there's a, there's a financial cost to this as well. Each, each response that, uh, you know, that, that is prevented saves, you know, untold dollars, you know, as, as far as, you know, as what we would have to contribute to, uh, to addressing this. Um, and also just, I just wanted to address very quickly the, you know, the, the thought of this community as a, as a, you know, as a great community to be in, and I completely agree with that. And I, but I think sometimes we, we, um, we get caught up in our own little bubbles of the people who we associate with and that, that we're around. And I, I just wanted to say thank you for, for seeing the problem and thank you for taking steps to address the problem when it would be very easy for us to just ignore it because of the type of community that we really do live in. And, and also wanted to, you know, just finally say, uh, thank you for pointing out the partnerships that are across the board, whether it be county staff or, or partnerships with, with the Sheriff's Department, um, or other organizations. I just want to, you know, thank you because we do live in a great community that does work together. When we see a problem, when we have somebody that steps up to address the problem like yourselves, um, uh, you know, people rally around that and they just make sure that, uh, we, it's a community effort. So thank you.
So it's a very innovative time. A few years ago, when we had a private meeting to discuss whether or not we were willing to accept opioid settlement or whether we were going to, um, not accept it and keep fighting. And, and we were back and forth a lot in that to, to say what, what can happen, what can be done with. And it was kind of a Santa Claus in government time because there had been a lot of federal money flowing down. And so we were able to do other things that local government had not been able to, to do because of different sources of funds that you thought, oh, this will just never happen off property taxes. And then, then you have different ideas. And then this meeting comes up, do we, do we settle, but do we not? Um, so it's, it's always great to be able to see the outcome of what happens from settlement dollars. Why is that important? Uh, not to say, oh, the county commission made a decision to get money to be able to do, to be able to say one day, since that comes from a settlement, that money's not going to be there. And so if we can show that this is important to our community and see dramatic differences in quality of life, in people living at all, because they're not dying. It was the same year that the numbers came out for being the highest opioid death-related in, in the state for our medical examiner. And so seeing stats like this and being able to show a track record hopefully will mean this is just an integral part of our EMS, an integral part of different agencies working together to be able to do this, to be able to show a, a lasting impact of care, um, following up at someone's home. It's, it's been a joy to talk to some of our staff who is on, on the, the grounds every day in this, operating the rigs and to see the, the change in their career, to be able to, uh, not just be a respondent to a, a 911 emergency, but to, to reach back out to say, how, how are you today? Um, what, what can we help you with in the, in the progression of overcoming this, uh, addiction? So it, it's great to see. I, I'm glad that there's so many agencies working together in this and hopefully it continues and we continue to see the, the great response from it. And, and one day we'll have to take up the conversation of where does the money come from now? And thankfully that day is not today. We'll just continue to, to be excited over this, uh, settlement and the different ways that we're able to, to partner together and what can continue to happen. So thanks for all the effort that you're putting into it in innovative ways.
Thank you, Chairman. And like you said, we're not just saving lives, we're also saving futures. And if anybody would like to know more about what goes on, we have International Overdose Awareness Day on August 28th at 6:00 PM at Cross Points Church. So everybody's invited to come out to that.
Great. And this year, Commissioners, in case y'all don't know, Chief Beige is the president of the Florida Police Chiefs Association. So doing, doing great things, not just here, but all over the state. So thanks for the work that you're doing. Before we move to the consent agenda, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
All right, we'll uh.
We'll get started back. Commissioners, the consent agenda, keep in mind that we have pulled three and twenty-one already.
I'll move passage minus three and twenty-one.
Thank you. Motion for the consent agenda minus three and twenty-one.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with a aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. We have three public hearings on today's agenda. The first is a quasi judicial hearing to consider a proposed future land use map amendment and rezoning on behalf of Race Track LLC. At this time, turn it to Ms. Hoshihara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody here who's gonna speak on this item, if you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear firm that the testimony shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but? Anyone? Commissioners, now is the appropriate time to disclose any ex parte communications you may have had. I see none, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Woodruff.
Morning Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Randy Woodruff, Growth Management Deputy Director. This morning, we have one item for your request. This is a small scale plan amendment and a rezoning as presented by Mark Siner of Chalked Out Engineering on behalf of Race Track LLC. This item is a request to change the Conference of Plans Futural Land Use Map designation of mixed use to commercial or to a more restrictive Futural Land Use Map designation. If the Futural Land Use Map Amendment is approved, there is a companion rezoning to rezone the property from mixed use to general commercial C3 or to a more restrictive zoning designation. The subject property is point seven-seven acres more or less in size. The applicant has submitted the small scale plan amendment in order to allow for future office buildings on the subject property. It's important to note that the existing mixed use Futural Land Use designation and zoning designation does allow for general C3 permitted uses, which would include an office warehouse like he was wanting to do. However, that was in subject that the property has to have direct access to an arterial or to a county located road. Truxton Avenue was currently listed as a local road, so therefore those C3 uses are not allowed within the mixed use. The application has been deemed compliant with the county's conference of plan. Just and at this point, kind of a ambrevy, I wanna go ahead and just enter the staff report into the record. But I would also like to note that the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed Futural Land Use Map Amendment and rezoning by a unanimous vote back on July the tenth. The military representative on the Planning Commission, Cheryl Sawyer, she was not in attendance. She had no comments, and she has not provided any comments of writing or else to this date. We have not received any comments or opposition to this request at this point. The proposed agenda item was properly advertised in the paper on August the fourth, and all return receipt letters were provided to property owners within the three hundred foot radius. Staff has no objections to the proposed Futural Land Use Amendment and rezoning reported to you this morning. Therefore, we recommend that the board consider the facts presented in the application in this the comments this morning, and then we ask that you make two separate motions with the Futural Land Use Map Amendment being first. Both staff and the applicant are here. Should you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Yes.
Randy, have, did we give any consideration to simply asking the board to redesignate that section of Truxton as a collector? Can we do that by board action?
That I would defer to Public Works to see again how those designations are defined for those particular roadways.
But I think with the action of the board, it could be done no matter what the policy is, right? It just seems like it'd be a simpler fix. I don't know, versus having to change the land use.
This is my district. Would you mind explaining what you mean by collector versus what they're proposing?
But so I understand that what the applicant wants to do could do it on mixed use, but for the fact, Truxton is called a local road. But if we simply call it a collector or an arterial road, they don't need a land use change. They can just do what they wanna do now. You're putting C3, suggesting putting C3 on it anyway. You wouldn't put C3 on a local road anyhow. So it probably doesn't make sense to keep calling it a local road, at least for X number of feet till you get to the property.
I actually like where you're going with this.
I'm just thinking if it gets the applicant where they wanna go, and we're not doing land use and zoning changes.
I kinda like that.
Anyway, sorry not to throw something weird into it, but.
Mr. Audrey.
I would be cautious with that. Scott and I are kinda giving each other winces on this because you can't break the road midstream and say it's a collector on one end or a local on one on the other, and so you've gotta look at Truxton from point A to point B, and I don't know that that's the right approach. I just don't know that that's the right thing to do, because then you change the characteristic of the full length of the road as opposed to this one particular, particular end of the, the segment.
Do I, can I ask something? Mr. Chairman?
If it has to do with this, yes.
Yes. Okay, um, so is it any part of Truxton? And this is maybe a school board issue, but I mean, it's, 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 it's my understanding there's a large part of Truxton that's still residential, yes?
No.
Commissioner, may I? That was kind of what I was gonna just remind the commission is that if you do that, you are changing the land use controls for the entire road.
But not if we set a designated point of demarcation from arterial to local, correct? I mean, there's other roads like that, that at the beginning of the road, they're, they're, I mean, you may have roads that are six lanes at one point reduced down to two lanes at some point over a distance, correct?
That's correct, but the, if, if you make this change in the road classification, then the zoning, all of those parcels would be allowed to do the commercial that this particular applicant is requesting, and so it would be the entire neighborhood, and we would probably need to notice the entire neighborhood that we were changing that designation, because they would be allowed to do the commercial use on all of those properties unless you just did a tiny portion of the road, which would be.
That's what I'm saying. My suggestion was at the southernmost boundary of the applicant's parcel, create a line of demarcation where the road transitions from local to arterial or collector, whichever is less intense between collector and arterial. Otherwise, I think we're faced with putting C3 on a local road, which I'm not even sure how that analysis shakes out. So this would be a way to slice that without doing something inconsistent, I think, with our, with our overall growth plan. And we don't have to change any zoning. I don't know, I, I've never seen anything that says the board can't designate a portion of a road, one thing, and a portion of the road, not another thing.
To my understanding, there's nothing residential on this road. If we're talking between racetrack and whatever that road is that goes through. What is that? Upsides?
I mean, Mr. Siner's here, I mean, he may wanna speak to it, but you know, I mean, I guess the question would be if, if we could redesignate the road and your, and your client could do what they wanna do with mixed use without having to go through the complaint amendment and all that, would that, is that a satisfactory result?
It, it's one way of doing it. I don't necessarily think that that's the right way to do it, and Jason could probably back me up on this. It's not a collector road. By definition of in transportation design, collector roads usually connect arterials to arterials. This is a def, clear definition of a, of a local road. Not trying to argue with you that you shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that, you know, if you were to say designate this road and I just had no, no preconceived notion of anything, I wouldn't say it was collector road. I'm very familiar with this piece of property because my office is on this road. So I've been basically driving up and down this road since nineteen ninety-seven, and you're asking about residential. There's like one or two left, maybe at all. And this is a problem we're having all along that south, finish it, the south portion of Racetrack Road. All those properties, the, the, the commercial aspect of it has encroached down into our, into those residential labels. And it's kind of spotty here and there, but running out of the same problem with other pieces of property here where we're, you know, you've got existing development that's been there forever. That's already commercial, and it's to zone mixed use, but it's not on a arterial or on a county collector road. And you can't even build on that piece of property what the piece, either you already have on your property or the adjacent neighbor to already have, so a follow-up on that would, maybe you wanna look at the zoning to change the zoning to remove some of those restrictions or move some things from C2 to C3 that are more in line with what we, what already exists out there.
I understand what you're saying. You're talking about a broader concept of.
But you're, you're trying to solve just one problem here, because I mean, the entire property, and I can't remember the name of the road to the, to the east of us. What's that? In Racetrack, yeah, but the property directly behind it, the McDonald's zone that they've owned for years. That's all zoned C3 from Racetrack to, so, so all the property behind this piece of property is already C3. So when you say we're encroaching down into this, you know, off of that, we're really not encroaching it, because it already is C3 in terms of its use.
Well, I didn't say encroaching.
No, what I'm saying is if you were gonna move that zoning down, it wouldn't be out of the, out of character with the neighborhood, because that's what it already is. So I mean, it would be, I mean, not say easier or better or whatever, but I mean, I don't see a problem with just zoning the C3, because it's already a C3 use.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I was gonna say that one road is one thing, but around there's a lot of residential. I don't think there's any residential on that road. It is all commercial at this.
No, there's, there's a few, you know, one or two little pockets, but I'd say probably eighty percent of it's commercial.
Mr. Tomalcheck, can you pull up the GIS map for us to see the current zoning?
It's in the agenda packet.
I wanted a broader picture. Thank you. I did look at the agenda packet.
The commercial is sort of a downzoning from the current mixed use. The mixed use allows much more density and intensity than the commercial.
You're, you're doing it right. Go back up. Go up. There you go. There you go. You gotta click on the folder to the right, left. It takes a second.
Can I ask a question while we're scrolling? What, what's the definition under our code of an arterial road? It's just a hierarchy. So you start with the interstates, and as you remove more and more access. So you have your complete controlled access, like your interstates and your highways. Then you have the arterials, which have minimal amounts of access, usually almost no driveways on them. And lots of collector streets intersecting with the arterials and signals. Then collectors have more access of, uh, they have additional driveways and usually kind of commercial type uses. They collect all of the local streets and take the local streets on the collector to the arterial, so it's just a hierarchy of roads and access. Got it. So arterials here, collector's a lower level, collector is the next step until you get to local. Yes, sir. Got it. So collector would been my suggestion if we looked at it, because I understand that would allow the use. I mean, I don't know how many local roads we have with that much intense commercial, you know, non-residential usage, but I'm not even sure that Truxton's really functioning as a local road anymore. I mean, it's busy as all get out. I know where, you know, Mr. Siner's office is, and there's some other businesses towards Racetrack. It's pretty busy.
I, I have no, if you wanna designate the whole street as a collector, I have no problem with it, because like you said, we have people going up and down that road all day long, and they're not coming to our businesses.
Commissioner Ketchel, it's your district. I don't really have a preference either way. I just, Mr. Coffey said we could have a quick meeting if I stayed quiet. I almost did it. But then I decided to just get out there and spend a little more time with everybody.
If you wish to make that motion, I'll second it.
Your district, so what?
If you wish to make the motion, I'll second it.
I would.
It's fine with me if we make it a collector road, is what I'm saying.
We make it a collector road.
And I'll second that.
If I'm mine. Is there a process to designating that road beyond just the county commissioners just making?
I don't think so.
Do have a list of the collector roads in the land development code, so it would probably have to go through that process and amend the land development code to include it.
Is that a major?
Process wise, I don't know if that can be done after the fact, or.
Commissioner, however you wanna handle it. I don't, I'm not trying to make it more difficult. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I? Wouldn't, wouldn't the most efficient thing to, the most efficient thing to do is just handle this issue as we currently have it on the docket and do, do what we intended to do coming here. We can look at changing it later on and looking, you know, what the process is, but I don't, I don't think we need to. In order to affect the change that we wanna see today, I don't think we need to take all of this under consideration.
I, I guess we'll withdraw then, because it looks like, I think that's the most efficient thing to do. Sounds like the staff would concur, so.
So I, I'm incredibly torn. Were you finished with that sentence? I'm sorry that I started.
Yes, sir.
I'm incredibly torn. In, in light of where we are as a state as well.
You're referring to the Senate Bill one eighty?
Well, I, I am, and I, I know that we have some leverage here, and we can, we can do this with no problem. At the same time, I'm not trying to pick sides or jump in a battle that we don't intend to be in either.
Yeah, so generally speaking, I would, because of Senate Bill one eighty, I would prefer to stick with a parcel request as opposed to a roadway that could change other parcels. I do think that's a, a more practical move, especially considering, in terms of. uh in terms of the simplicity, this is the request of the applicant for their parcel. I think that I I would recommend going with that approach. If we want to start revising the way we look at how we identify roadways, that's uh more involved and it could potentially have a ripple effect on other parcels. And I that's probably the hesitation you see from the pragmatic engineers in the room that just don't want to throw something out there and see what hits. I I like the idea of sticking with the request that's at hand if there is no objection by the board. Um, and if we want to look at how we revise or classify roadways, we we can do that on a a more intentional approach that will make sure we don't impact anything with Senate Bill one eighty.
And and where I was going is I think that's the easiest approach because you all have had time to prepare and study for that. And this comes to you as new and 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 without time to process. But I I I'm not sure that after the time process, we might come back that not making uh.
It it may be that not making that change is the right move, but I I think that's where you get a lot of the I'm I'm chewing on the answers and trying not to speak too quickly at a turn.
So would you like um a little time for the two of you to step out and hash back and forth for a moment?
I I I am confident that the recommendation be that you proceed with the request that's at hand. And if you would like staff to look at the whether we reclassify roadways, we can do that. And I think that'd be more than a conversation.
So.
I wish we weren't in the midst of uh someone petitioning and I I'm not outside of the packet.
If I heard, if I heard what Mr. Snyder said, I think he's comfortable with proceeding with requests that's at hand for the rezoning uh of the of the.
Is this the item you're here for, Mr. Snyder? Okay. When you didn't swear in, I wasn't sure if this was it or or not. Um, so. Yes, well, I I didn't know. So. Okay, so so you you believe even in political climate, we're safer to just proceed with what's being asked.
A hundred percent because the applicant, the the property owner has asked for it. And Lynn's is getting ready to answer that because it's a much better legal question.
Yes. So one of the exceptions to the prohibition of Senate one eighty is uh this very situation where the property owner is requesting that uh land use change.
Sometimes you're just safer to stay away.
Chairman, since this is my district, I think uh it's safe to say that we've withdrawn the motion. Okay. So let me, it's two bites. Let's move forward and um I'll make the motion that we approve the future land use.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Then I'll make a motion that we uh approve the ordinance change designation.
So we we got very uh off script for the public hearing and we never closed the public comment time and things like that. Um. So I need to slow down just a second. Sorry, we got distracted. I really like that idea, by the way. But um is there anyone from public desiring to speak to this item? I have no speaker cards. You'd like to speak to this item?
Just to go back to what you're talking about.
We need to have you sworn in first.
I'll swear in it.
Do you swear from that testimony shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, remind you before you speak that you're about to get what you want.
Uh, well, no, I was just gonna say. I was gonna, I I I totally under, uh, I think there are, there is an opportunity here to have more collector roads. I because I think there are situations where we're going to get stuck like this with mixed use, not being able to provide the people what they want because of the way the language is in the code. But I also would warn you is the fact that I just got to thinking, it's a lot easier for me to just come and keep coming in here and asking you, hey, can you just change this to collector road and this to a, you know, and just keep asking you to just redesignate roads than it would be to work through the the zone, the zoning and future land use process. So, you know, you got to be careful when you open that can of worms. And somebody could just keep, you know, utilizing that as a tool to, I mean, work around or work within the system, just throwing to throw that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public desiring to speak to this item? So we we have a motion from Commissioner Ketchel, a second from Commissioner Cox. We're gonna let those motions stand, correct? And we'll revoke on that after public comment. Um, all in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. So the first item is down. The second motion to approve rezoning, Commissioner Ketchel. All right, so we have a motion for the rezoning. Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion, commissioners? All in favor, signify with a aye. That passes unanimously. The second public hearing, Ms. Hoshara. Begin it. Okay. Next is public hearing to consider a request to vacate a portion of alleyway in block eighty five, townsite of Fort Dixie. Uh, Mr. Bitterman.
Um, commissioners, unfortunately, uh, because the newspaper forgot to run the ad, we recommend that a motion be made to table the vacation right away, time certain to September sixteenth, so the legal ad can be published.
Chairman.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we time that we, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel to postpone until September sixteenth.
And that meeting is here at the Ocap and begins at three o'clock.
Okay. So.
I think Mr. Drury wants to say something about this.
He did have a sign posted at some point, so I would suggest that if any member of the public was here because of the sign that was posted temporarily would like to speak, I think it would be prudent to allow them to do so.
Sure. I have no speaker cards for this item. Um, is there a member of the public here desiring to speak to this item? Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion, commissioners?
No.
All in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? So that item is postponed until September sixteenth on or after three o'clock. The last public hearing is to consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds for Air Force enlisted village. Ms. Hoshara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the Air Force enlisted village has requested that the county issue certain bonds for the purpose of financing, refinancing the acquisition, construction, improvement, installation and equipping of capital expenses related to the Bob Hope Village and Hawthorne House campus. Uh, as a reminder to the commissioners and as a I guess briefing to the new commissioners, uh, in this situation, the county would serve as a conduit issuer. The bonds are solely secured by loan payments and other pledged collateral of the Air Force enlisted village. The county is fully identified, protected from any financial or legal liability. The approval and issuance of the conduit revenue bonds has no impact on the county's credit rating or its current debt. Um, and in the unlikely event that the Air Force enlisted village were to default on any of the bonds, the county would not be under any obligation to pay any amounts that are owed. And none of its revenues or properties would be available to any of Air Force enlisted villages creditors. This is the public hearing, which is required prior to the consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond. Um, appearing via Zoom is uh my law partner out of our Tampa office, Chris Traver, who's a bond counsel for the county. Um, and I believe in the audience, uh, Mr. McLean is here from the Air Force enlisted village. And the event commissioners had any questions?
I would like to make a statement that I am on the board. Not only is this in my district, but I'm on the board proudly of the Air Force enlisted village.
Is there any member of the public desiring to speak to this item? Seeing none, at this time we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Have a motion by Commissioner Cox.
A second, please.
Second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Yes. Ms. Adams, Department Business. My apologies, Mr. Fogg.
No worries.
Didn't know.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, the item before you today is associated with two single source contracts with tri-native contractors for the purchase, transport remediation of two vessels that would be included in our artificial reef program. Um, the first one is the Bell Reynolds. It was actually a vessel that was being um retrofit to be a hunting camp or a fishing camp in the bayous of Louisiana. Um, that project fell to the wayside ten years ago or so, and it's been sitting in a dock ever since. Uh, we started talking with the contractor a few months ago and identified it as a as a good candidate for an artificial reef. The other one is the Henry Alex, and this is one that we've been monitoring for about three years. It's an offshore supply vessel about two hundred twenty five feet long, pretty similar to the Deepstem uh three that we deployed two years ago um as part of a tri-county project. Um, both of these vessels are actually priced below what we normally pay for similar sized vessels. Um, and the the contractor is one that we've worked with on three separate um artificial reef deployments in the past. Um, and it's important to note that neither, both of these vessels are actually in Louisiana, but neither of them will be going underneath the Destin Bridge. So that is that is a plus. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Now, if we would have said that, it would have been too soon.
I had to jump on it before you did, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier today, Mr. Fogg, we heard one of our speakers, she I think she's still in the room, talk about PCEs leaching on the paint. Could you address that?
Yeah, so PCBs are are something that are in most vessels, most paints and materials uh from prior to nineteen eighty. So normally vessels that were born after that date, you don't have to worry about it. But in the case of the SS United States being born in the nineteen fifties, there's a lot of PCBs on board. We've worked with the EPA and collected hundreds of samples of paints throughout the vessel to identify exactly where those PCBs are to ensure that they're being removed. The USS Riskenee that was deployed twenty years ago got a waiver to leave those PCBs on board. That proved to be a very bad idea, and that's why PCBs are no longer allowed on artificial reefs.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a little bit of background in hexavalan chromium because I've uh one of my previous assignments when I was in real estate development consulting was the remediation of a C six pond for uh for chromalloy bed industrial park. Um, so I guess my question is that I've it seems, maybe not, but it seems a little far fetched that the amount of hexavalan chromium that was still present on the vessel um could penetrate both um scuba gear and um the the scuba device, you know, breathing devices, um, just knowing, you know, what what the the concentration of particulate that uh of hexavalan chromium, um, it takes quite a bit, you know, to to uh produce a carcinogenic effect um in the human body.
Yes.
In in your opinion, is there any possibility at all that the levels of um HFC six that are still present on the ship could potentially endanger any of our divers?
No, not not penetrating the dive gear. I think what she was maybe referring to was the the safety issues associated with diving to maybe some of the deeper depths that the SS United States may be sitting in um or penetrating the wreck itself and being lost. Um, I don't think the safety issues that she was referring to with the chemical was associated with the diver safety, maybe.
Okay, I I was just curious because she did specifically mention, you know, six, it's a C six and it's a favorite, you know, for for um some uh folks to to.
Of course.
You know, zone in on, but um I just wanted to make doubly sure that.
Absolutely. And to be clear, we're following all the regulatory I guess, all the all the folks that have put out documents talking about preparing vessels for artificial reefs are involved in this process and we're not cutting any corners.
Certainly assuming that was the case. Just wanted to get the an extra validation from you. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So I'm getting a lot of questions from uh locals about how many wrecks we're going to put in the Gulf. Have we reached our maximum capacity or do you still intend to put additional wrecks out there?
So when we started deploying large vessels back in twenty twenty, we hadn't deployed one in a very, very long time. So we were making up for lost time. Um, so a lot of those wrecks that have been deployed that are thirty, forty years old are just a haul. That's all that's left. A lot of the large storms that have come along have wreaked havoc on them and it's a a resource that you have to continue to renew. Um, so while we have caught up or maybe made up for lost time, we are now the the leader in artificial reef construction in the state, if not the country. Um, and I I would like to say that we'll continue to, you know, set the standard in the artificial reef world.
How are you paying for this item?
Uh, this is part of uh year five of the five-year artificial reef plan that was passed five years ago.
Are there any possibilities of other people paying for it?
That's a very good question. Um, there's a very good possibility that either these vessel vessels could be scooped up by the US military and used as part of some of their exercises offshore. There have been four similar vessels that have actually been um purchased from the county for what we had in it for them to be able to use as an artificial reef. So essentially the county had zero money in the deployment of that artificial reef.
And knowing that we're next door to the Gulf Test Range in the past, do they have a hundred percent recovery rate from when they sink vessels to the testing munitions?
Hundred percent recovery rate?
Yes, the vessels that they sink, do they go get them back?
No, so that's a it's a really cool opportunity for us to work with the military. We provide them with the opportunity to leave the vessel on the bottom as long as it has public purpose. And in the case of these vessels going to the bottom, it's essential habitat for reef fish, great place for people to go fishing and diving. So it's a win-win collaboration with us in the military.
Great, great. Um, commissioners, we don't have a motion or a second on this. Motion. Motion by Commissioner Cox, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Maddox.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Pat Maddox, Director of Public Safety. Before you today is the new contract for animal control services with the Panhandle Animal Welfare Society, PAWS. Um, I want to give a little background as to where we are and how we got here. Um, we are in the second year of a potential three-year contract where we had a two-year contract with a possible one-year renewal and PAWS has elected not to engage the one-year renewal. Um, as you probably have seen uh in the newspapers and heard on the radio, they have cited some financial difficulties in not being able to operate within the existing contract levels, not only for the county, but for uh many municipalities as well. So that led to talks over many, many months uh and led us to the ultimate conclusion that in my opinion, uh, and and to their credit, uh, to their admission, that they will likely not be in the animal control service business within the next year, perhaps two years. So that being said, uh, the county with continuity of operations in mind knows that it has to seek another way to provide animal control services. In the past, we have gone out to bid for animal control services and received only response from PAWS uh for the animal control services side. So that being said, um, we are looking right now at standing up our own county service. That is going to take some time. We are looking at available options for land, for buildings. I'm working with Mr. Coffey on building a budget and that will come before you add a date to be announced. Uh, but for the meantime, what we have requested from PAWS is a one-year stopgap. Uh, we requested a two-year stopgap. They were not comfortable with that with their current state of financial affairs, so they were able to say we can provide a one-year commitment. However, even within that one-year commitment, there is a kickout clause if they were to suffer financial collapse. That being said, before you today is an option uh for a one-year uh new contract, which would bring the total to eight hundred and twenty-four thousand eighteen dollars uh or sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars per month. That was reached by uh coming to a six point five per capita uh figure, which is what they could live with minimally and they would be able to apply to municipalities as well across the board. I know uh from conversations with some of the municipalities that much of the consternation on getting back on board with PAWS even temporarily was that rates were charged differently across the spectrum, whether it were a a county contract or a municipal contract. And there was a little bit of a, I'd say hurt feelings as to how those those figures were reached. The county has in the past engaged in um some in-kind donations or in-kind contributions such as vehicles um paying for um dangerous dog hearings, the administration fees for that, as well as uh some other fuel considerations. And in this particular case, in lieu of providing a higher annual rate, the in-kind contributions have been removed. So this would be basically a a funding-only deal. Um, it would be a fifteen point four three percent raise over the year-two figure, which we are currently at. Uh, because we have been going back and forth on some of the uh smaller provisions within the contract, my request today is that we designate authority to the county administrator to approve uh the contract, which currently ends on August thirty first. If we were able to come to a conclusion with a non-dollar de minimis change, there are some small provisions that we're still going back and forth on right now, such as the responsibility for pet-friendly sheltering and some of the other smaller provisions. So um if Lynn is satisfied with what they come back, uh, I would like to be able to have John execute a contract that is a non-dollar change from that figure. So that is the option before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What are the municipalities doing?
The municipalities are still in flux. As a matter of fact, uh, I attempted many times this morning to get an answer back from Tracy. I think she's engaged in other meetings. I was able to speak to one of the board members uh who told me that um she believes that Mary Esther is considering the six point five, but does not have any uh firm confirmation from the city of Miceville yet. I believe Destin was turned back on um almost a month ago at six point five.
What did they do in the meantime?
Destin uh had an emergency arrangement with Walton County to provide services for uh emergency services only.
And Crestview started their own. Laurel Hill is utilizing, what do you know?
I believe Crestview is helping Laurel Hill uh on an emergency basis as well.
Do we know about Valparaiso?
But I don't believe LP ever had a contract.
Okay. Did Cinco ever have a contract or the town of Chalamar?
I don't believe so. I can tell you that as we move forward and, and the county begins investigating its own availability, that those could come up on the table.
It's, it's going to be important to know because the discussion has already been taking place with some of the municipalities that, oh, this just needs to be a county function. And so we need to be sure that we're clear across the board with how that is maintained. Crestview started their own, and so of course, they, they fully underwrite that within their budget as they did their PAWS contract.
Yes, sir.
And so we just have to be sure that there's a, a level playing field.
Yes, sir. I've requested a list of those contracts as well. I haven't gotten that back just yet.
All right, thank you. Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Question, so, yeah, um, I don't know, you, you said you're, you know, working on the process, looking at what, what's the future going to be and navigating towards understanding we're going to probably have to self-perform some of these functions. And you're do, in doing that analysis, are you looking at, at the potential of having the ACO or Animal Control Officer function in-house and whether or not the sheltering has to be in-house, whether that could be contracted? Are we looking at it from the perspective that you can split the sheltering and the ACO function and perhaps bring both in or only bring one in? Are we, are we considering those options?
There's no option that's off the table, sir. What I can tell you is this, is that in investigating the way that PAWS is funded and understanding that there's a for-profit side on the animal control side and a 501 side, and that the 501 side operates off of donations, whereas the ACO side operates off of contract revenue, that the county is essentially over a barrel because we have depended on this agency for service. I don't ever want to put us in that position again. So the fact that we are investigating both, yes, we are looking at what the viability is, but I don't know if that's a great long-term solution because if those donations dry up for one reason or another, we're back to the same scenario. So we just have to make sure that we're looking at it holistically, that if we are going to do it and we're going to go through the pain of developing it, we might as well build a facility that can handle both. If we have to take over another facility, make sure we take over a facility with shell space to do both, so that when we have to engage in hurricane sheltering, we have that, that pet-friendly space available as well. So all options are on the table.
So as you're going through that analysis, I guess, kind of, you know, working off what the chairman was alluding to, are you, are you visiting with the municipalities, trying to figure out if there's going to be any desire to do a, you know, some sort of a joint participation?
Mr. Coffey has actually sent out some emails requesting some data from them on exactly what they would need.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Mr. Coffey, do you have a response to that?
I was just gonna say, we, we are looking at all options. I think Patrick raises a great point. I, is, we can't have animal control on one side and then the shelter not cooperate or shut down certain hours when we got animals spring to them and all that, and we gotta have a reliable and responsible service. We have talked to all the cities. We've gotten information on their contracts and what each of them are doing that, so for example, Niceville is doing their own, Crestview's chose to do both sides of the equation because they couldn't rely on the PAWS for sheltering. So, and their budget has gone from 175,000, this year it's going to be 450,000. So they're looking at more permanent shelter stuff, but we, they are open to all these municipalities are looking to us for leadership, I think, and they're all looking to us keeping their options open. So Crestview, before they make big capital expenditures, they're willing to talk to us and partner with us potentially if we come to with some viable options.
Mr. Ketchel.
I'm going to make the motion, motion for approval. I hope that each commissioner up here has gone to PAWS. I have toured the facility on a number of occasions. We can do better, and I want us to do better. If we're, this is going to buy us some interim time, but if we're going to take this on and bring it in-house, I want us to run a first-rate facility, a place where animals will be safe during hurricanes, a place where animals will be treated humanly, a place that we can all be proud of in Oaklus County. Many counties have this responsibility. We have not had this responsibility up till now, but it would be my sincere hope that we would run a wonderful facility in conjunction with groups like we just heard from and to make sure that we've got a facility that's a no-kill shelter, that would be a wonderful place, that people would feel comfortable with it. We do not have that right now in Oaklus County and haven't had it for a long time. So that would be my motion to go forward with this and buy us some time as we plan forward, to go forward in the next couple of years.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Chairman, I neglected to add that, I mentioned that there was a kickout clause in case there was a financial collapse. We have soft confirmation left and right for emergency services. Should that happen, that we can push a button and make sure that we don't lose at least emergency services to the, to our constituents while we stand up that, that service.
Commissioners, is there a second?
I'll second it, but I, I wanted to ask one thing about, about moving forward. Is there the possibility of building the facility and, and contracting out the, the people to man it? I mean, to, to, I would say that, I have visited PAWS here recently, and it wasn't necessarily on my own accord, except that we had a family member who abandoned an animal. And, and that animal, my daughter was very close to. So just out of instinct, you know, we visited PAWS to, to see if the animal was there, and the animal was there. The, the owner of the animal had presented and, and was refusing to pay the fee and ordered the animal to be put down. Healthy, healthy animal, nothing wrong with it. So their policy is that, you know, they require a surrender fee. Well, some people, I'm sure, are unable to pay the surrender fee. This individual didn't wish to pay the surrender fee and certainly within the means to do so. So I get that there are some financial issues there. I think there are very well-intentioned people there who are agree, fully agree, are well beyond their capacity financially to, to manage that institution. However, I do think that we have numerous contenders here that would be, you know, able to, to man an animal control facility, not necessarily to build an animal control facility. And I, I suspect that that is probably the case with several individuals that work there currently, who are probably very well-qualified animal control officers. Is there the possibility of building a facility and, and having, you know, the municipalities partner in for the building of the facility and the operation to, you know, to contract with individuals or to, you know, as animal control officers? Are we going to have to employ the animal control officers and absorb the, the liability and, and that that comes from, from that endeavor as well?
Commissioner, on the animal control side, we will absolutely have to employ the animal control officers. On the sheltering side, there will be options for being able to use other personnel. We're even looking at how to use jail personnel, people that are either going to volunteer based on their sentence or, or be sentenced to some additional workload based on their conviction rate and, and their status. And I've been working with Chief Moore on how to do that, and that all depends on exactly where the facility is built, whether it becomes a giant campus idea, which we've discussed before, or within a certain busing range or distance. So there are many options on the table in order to facilitate that in an economical fashion.
Great. Certainly pleased to hear that. Thank you.
The hope is that it would be built adjacent. The, the hope is that we'd be able to build adjacent, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, there's some to come on that in the next meeting or two, hopefully next meeting, but-
Believe me, Commissioner, I don't want to get in this business either, but we don't really have a good choice at this time.
Right.
And I don't, I don't want this to continue in this county. I know we're all getting the same emails.
I agree.
So-
As my second continues.
There's going to be an unpopular discussion within this as well, that the county can't be in the pet rearing business either. And so I, I, you know, we obviously have farm animals, we have pets, and we have no desire of moving down a gruesome route with animal control, but we have to stay local government as well. And so having partners with shelters and no-kill facilities is going to be incredibly important. Yeah.
The wonderful thing about building our own service from the ground up is that right now, nothing is off the table, and we can build any size service that you wish to pay for or that we can fund.
PAWS has a lot next to them that was recently on the tax deed sale. They got it out, I believe, last week, and, which means it may be, may be available, but we, we should explore that idea.
If anybody can buy property, sir, I think there's somebody sitting in this room-
Boy.
Who may know a thing or two about that.
Oh, do we know? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with the aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Bitterman.
Morning again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Scott Bitterman with the Public Works Department. The first item today for Public Works is a request of $400,000 in Surtax reserves for the Santa Rosa Boulevard project. Because of the board's prioritization, the state will award us $1 million to construct the first phase of the Santa Rosa Boulevard project. That first phase goes from the first beach park to the Brooks Bridge project limits. I think you're all familiar with the project. It is to enhance pedestrian safety and improve drainage, and includes a 14-foot-wide multi-use path. Half Associates Incorporated has already prepared 60% plans, and they're currently funded through 90% completion. The additional funding, if you approve today, will allow us to phase the project and produce 100% design plans. Still unknown is if the electric and cable utilities will be buried. Florida Power and Light is almost done with the cost estimate to bury these lines. When we have that cost estimate, I'll come back before the board and present the costs and see if we want to move forward with that as well. I would note that the Surtax Committee voted to approve last Wednesday, and so today we recommend a motion to approve the allocation of fiscal year '25 Surtax reserves in the amount of $400,000 to complete the design work for the Santa Rosa Boulevard improvements project, and includes contingency and to approve a budget transfer. Be glad to answer any questions.
Proud to make the motion, and I'm surprised at the lack of people who are here that normally come out for this. So that means we've done a good job talking with them over the years, and I thank Mr. Autry, Mr. Coffey for that. And Mr. Bitterman, thank you.
All right, thank you. The second item from Public Works is a request of $330,000 in Surtax reserves for grant sidewalk projects. Oaklus County has been awarded federal funds through the local agent, local agency program, the acronym is LAP, to design and build two sidewalk projects. These two sidewalk projects have been brought to the board many times before through the grant application, and even recently, you've awarded construction contracts for them. It's the South Avenue sidewalk, and that goes from James Lee Road to Highway 85, and then the Stillwell Boulevard sidewalk goes between Highway 85 and Monterey Road. Now, the grants were initially set up so that they would fully fund the construction and everything that we would need for the project. We submitted these grants, you know, around the 2020 timeframe, and since that timeframe, construction costs across the country have really escalated beyond what the grant ever envisioned. FDOT did give us more money than we had originally requested, but it's still not quite enough to cover it. In addition, there's a wooden pedestrian bridge on Stillwell Boulevard. It's located just west of the Walker Elementary. It's kind of fallen into disrepair in the past six years, and so we're also asking for some money. We'll spruce that bridge up. Right now, it's got some barricades on it, and we want to have a good continuous path that goes all the way through there. The Surtax Committee did recommend the allocation of the funding last Wednesday, and so we recommend a motion to approve the allocation of fiscal year '25 Surtax reserves in the amount of $330,000 for the construction of the two sidewalk projects and the budget transfer. Be glad to answer any questions on this item.
Excited to see this come.
It's very much needed.
Commissioners?
I'll be happy to make a motion. I know this touches three districts directly, you know, one, two, and four, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Bitterman, you working on this. I've had a lot of citizen requests over the years, particularly about the South Avenue, Pocahontas Drive area, and I'm sure Commissioner Ketchel's had a number of those as well. In fact, I think there's a beaten path where you can see pedestrian traffic along there. It's a bit dangerous, so thanks for working this. I think, you know, obviously, too bad the grants don't cover it in full, but to be able to do this, these two pretty significant sidewalk projects in the local match, be 330,000, and coming out of sales tax, is really phenomenal. So thanks for working on this.
For sure, and I would add, you know, just based on that, that the days of getting the grants for the sidewalk projects funded 100% are over. The last iteration, when we submitted applications, we had to agree to submit 20%. You know, we're in a good position versus the counties around us and the other municipalities because we do have that resource that the voters approved, that we can easily come up with that 20% match, and we can get a lot of those grants.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
And that'll be on the ballot next year. We need to really start advertising that people know this is the kind of work that is, can be accomplished. When I became a commissioner, the first term, we, we used to say, and I'd call Mr. Autry, he'd say, we'll put it on the list, it'll probably get done in seven years. That's how bad it was. And now, here we are, doing projects like this. It's amazing.
Any further discussion?
Just, just one little thing, and just so the citizens know that, that sales tax is about 60% paid for by our visitors.
All in favor, signify with the aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bitterman. You're doing a great job as interim Public Works Director. Yes, sir. Hours. All right, thank you. All right, we have one speaker comment. You'll have up to three minutes for any item you choose. Mr. Bob McGlaughlin? Yes? McGlaughlin? Yes. Yes, sir. Well, your time won't start till you do, so you take as long as you need to get here. There's no rush. Mike, come push a button for him, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Bob McGlaughlin, Oaklus County, for over 24 years in the United States, for over 85 years, but don't take it easy on me because of that. What I want, I come today to, to say, are we in the budget meeting session? Is that over? The budget meeting? The budget for the year?
The workshops are over, sir, but we have two budget hearings coming up in September.
Okay. Other than Mr. Bitterman, I don't know if any of the representatives out of the Service Department probably worked here. Anybody from Public Works here, Mr. Bitterman?
The leadership.
Yes?
Yes, sir, there's a couple.
Okay. I want to say, but first of all, I just come down from Crestview this morning, and we say they're finished now. Has anybody noticed the utility poles that highlight the city coming down by Chalamar School?
How could you miss them?
Great job, great job, and to get it done. I want to say, I add $2 to it if necessary, but the people's in the Service Department, the Public Works, they're doing a fantastic job. Has anybody asked for pay raise for those guys?
We have. Yes, sir, and we have one incorporated in the budget this year.
Huh?
We have it incorporated in the budget this year as they've gotten the last several years.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. I talked to, just want to know the status on the sidewalk in Chalamar. I did speak to Mr. Bitterman on that, but, but the public, can he tell us the status on that?
I'll be glad to ask him for an update if he has it off the cuff, but I'll let you finish your public comment time and then let him give an update on that briefly.
Well, the public comments that, and I have to go to another hearing because of this, but at, I saw something on that about Bee's Park, right, on Oaklus Island? Okay. All right, well, I got cited for being out there, but- Alright, well, I got cited for being out there, but uh and anyway. That's another hearing, but I just want to appreciate uh. The people's in the service department. And uh. I don't want them to work like they're mad, so need some more money, they ought to have it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bitterman, will you give a brief update on the sidewalks?
Yeah, I mentioned at the budget uh hearing that this will be the year of the sidewalk. So the Sixth Avenue sidewalk, it's currently under design. We uh have a grant for that. Um I'm reviewing the thirty percent plans right now and I believe that um it's funded in FDOT's fiscal year um twenty-six. And so it'd be July or no fiscal year twenty-seven, so July of twenty-six. Is when I believe that money would be available for construction. We'll have an agreement that comes before you at that time. And then likely it'll be uh twenty-seven when we do construct that sidewalk.
Chairman, if I might, the lady that turned one hundred today, it was her request that started that sidewalk that you're speaking about. And I wish she was here to still hear that because she was really excited. And Mr. Bob, while you were here, I thought maybe you would mention the ball fields. They've never been in better shape thanks to Mr. Peters and his crew. They have done a. Parks and Recreation now has taken a whole new level with our ball fields in Shalimar and I'm very grateful to them.
Well, I I appreciate it and thank you for speaking about safety. Uh number one, but you don't hear the sound ringing in the area like picking up teenagers. Cause the trouble. And uh. I may come for a pat on the back, but uh I do from time to time drive by the ballpark. And I encourage the students out there, this is a little discretion to uh. Not to fall. But I would place the net every time if you're ready, if you're not considered. And if you're ready to invest in it, I feel. While I'm still around.
Yes, sir.
That's why I mentioned it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Is anyone else from the public desire to speak? Yes. If you'll please come. When you finish, if you'll complete a speaker card, that'll be beneficial. Thank you. When you come, if you'll push the speak button, you have up to three minutes for any topic that you desire. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've been here once time before and we've been talking about sidewalks and I've noticed that. Where I see a lot of people walking to include me and others, we're still having issues with the sidewalks. Where the sidewalks are, for example, you still have cars parked on them. When kids and I and others are walking down, you can't walk on the sidewalk for the cars. Okay, we still have people where I talked about the speed bumps. I notice they're paving the roads in Port Dixie. But I notice we're not doing anything with the speed bumps to where we can. Since we are paving, it doesn't take that much money to elevate a little bit. People are still speeding. And when you're walking on the sides of the roads that does not have sidewalks. You get called unbecoming names and people are rude. And I know we're talking about Sixth Street, but please be concerned about the other streets where families are walking now, where we have. Children walking now, where you have seniors walking, so please don't just look at Sixth Street or Twelfth Street. You know, look at all the streets where we're trying to live and go.
What is your name?
Thank you. Gwendolyn Quinn.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Tomalcheck, I'll have a card there for you. Alright. Commissioners minute, Commissioner Cox, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to thank everyone, particularly in the county for for your um outpouring of sympathy. Over the passing of my mother, it's been a very difficult time um compounded by the fact that we we she has been burg- was burglarized on the day of her services. Um so a little bit extra for us to deal with and the support of um my fellow county commissioners and the staff has been tremendous. The the citizens um outpouring of support has also been just um quite humbling. I wanted to thank everyone for for your taking your, you know, two minutes to to reach out. It has made all the difference in the world and that's all I have.
Mr. Goodman?
Nothing further. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchel?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Palmer?
Uh yes, I just have uh one thing. I'm something I'm very excited about as I believe all of us have been. Uh separately briefed on the uh the new park that the uh our governor and state legislature has allocated funds for. Um the state is uh is now requesting that there be a letter uh from the county um just. Uh committing to managing the facilities and uh some improvements on that property. Um and so I just I would request that we have a consensus. Um understanding that this will have to come before the board for an MOU uh at some point for final approval, but for now. Uh if we could have a consensus that uh we allow um. The county to to put together a a or the staff to put together a letter of commitment uh for us to do that, signed by the chairman. Um I would just ask that the board consider that.
It's exciting. Sure. It's good with me. Do we need, is consensus okay for that or do we need to walk up? Do we have consensus to move in that direction?
Okay, thank you. It's, I mean, it's such a amazing opportunity for the county. I just appreciate you guys all supporting that.
Sure, thank you. Alright, nothing further. Meeting's adjourned.
Because when I was reading pillows, I was writing. I was writing this red. And I started calling some meetings. The meetings, the meetings toward the grant. I was the decision. So I started looking at meetings. I got a report that said like, hey, I'm listening here as the union member, the first debate. We're changing policy because one mostly for the same product, same times. And uh. I think all this time, as then for the next year, they changed the policy. I did, I wrote this. But. And I got clamped past the way. So for the next year, this is, you're gonna have to ask. I like. So when I'm also very busy. And so my wife, she started working with the. I suggest.
Well, then she put on the.